The Committee of the Hold is in session. Jim, you're up.
How are you doing?
All right. Thank you, Council Presidents and members of the City Council. I am Jim Sykes, Transportation Director for the City. And we're joined tonight by several members of the King County Metro. And they got a couple of updates, project updates for us. Natalie, you want to come on up and I'll introduce you? Natalie Westburg is our Service Planner for the Renton area. So she's the one really on the ground figuring out what people of Renton need as far as services, problem solves, and things like that for a particular area. She's going to talk about the Renton-Kent-Auburn Area Mobility Plan. This is a service plan for our area as well as the other two cities. And it's also talking about some of the services that will be changed as part of the Rapid Ride or maybe even sooner than that. She's done a lot of community outreach, which she'll talk about, and has some proposals based on the outreach that she's been doing in Renton. So with that, I'll turn it over.
Thank you, Jim. My name is Natalie, and I'm joined here tonight by our Community Engagement Lead, Gunnar Scott, right there, and Ryan Miller, who is also a Transit Service Planner in the Renton area and can help answer questions. All right. So I know you all have seen information about this project in the past, so I'll try to move through this first part pretty quickly. But just a reminder of our project goals. First, we haven't made major network changes in this area in about 10 years. And the patterns of how people travel and the demographics of the area have changed quite a bit. So we're really looking to update our network to increase network efficiency and focus our investments on where mobility needs are the greatest and in equity priority areas. Second, we are looking to develop a network of different types of mobility services that meet riders' needs. So a fixed route bus that operates every 30 minutes might not be the best thing for everyone. So we're looking at some new flexible services as well as integrating to a future Rapid Ride line, the Rapid Ride Eye Line that Greg will be talking to you about. Third, through this project, we are creating a single route that will travel from Renton to Kent to Auburn and be upgraded to the Rapid Ride Eye Line in 2023. And finally, in our planning process, we are really looking to center historically underrepresented folks in our project decision-making. So that has been what has guided our engagement and decision-making process through this project. At the bottom, just a quick overview of our timeline. We spent the spring looking at needs, developed different concepts for change over the summer. And we now have a final recommendation that we are bringing to the King County Council in early 2020. And we will be implementing changes to the fixed route network if the plan is approved in September 2020. So a little bit less than a year from now. We have been working with City of Renton staff throughout this process, both through technical coordination workshops but also in our partner review board. We also have representation from Renton Technical College and other major institutions in the area in that review board. They have been tracking our decision-making process throughout the spring, summer, and fall. You'll see on the bottom, we've also had three major community engagement periods through this process. The first, looking at needs, mobility barriers, challenges with our current system. Then over the summer, looking for feedback on different alternatives for how we might make changes. And then in the fall, we just completed a final engagement phase to get some feedback on our proposed service change. Throughout these three phases, we have been doing a lot of community engagement through different channels. We've been having stakeholder interviews with different community organizations. These are a few of the ones we've engaged in Renton, but I think there's about 10 that we've worked with. We've been doing tabling and attending different community events. For the Area Mobility Plan, we've had a particular focus on the Renton Highlands and the Benson Hill areas because we've heard that there's a need for more focused engagement on mobility needs in those communities. We have attended different community organization briefings and presentations. We presented at the Renton Highlands Library last week, as well as to the Renton Commute Trip Reduction Network, which is major Renton employers. We have an online survey that we've used for each phase of the project, and we've received about 200 to 300 responses on all the Renton questions. And then we've been getting on our buses and talking to folks who ride the routes that we're looking at changing because we know that our online surveys are not reaching everybody who might be impacted by these changes. So we've been doing surveys onboard our buses on four different Renton routes. So these are some of the key themes that we've heard. First, that we need to provide more weekend and late-night service. Second, that we need shorter, more frequent routes that are easier for people to use. That we need to focus transit access on getting people to critical community assets like childcare and schools and jobs, resource centers. And then last, that east-west connections are very difficult today, especially south of the F-line. There's not really an easy way to travel east-west from Renton to other cities and communities. Another element that I want to highlight for you all of our engagement process is our Mobility Board. This is a group of 27 members who live, work, and travel through Renton, Kent, and Auburn. It's a very diverse group with native English, Somali, and Spanish speakers. So we have translation in multiple languages. And we have members who are seniors, students, and riders with disabilities. This group is kind of shown in our decision-making processes, that green bus. They have been the ones who have helped us kind of cull through our engagement findings and prioritize what mobility needs we need to address. They have reviewed and revised our proposal for recommended changes. And we are bringing our final concept and the feedback that we've heard in this last phase to them tomorrow night. We will bundle up all of their input along with our final concept and bring this to the King County Council, as I mentioned, in early 2020. Okay, so these are the main mobility needs that the mo- that, sorry. These are the main mobility needs that our Mobility Board prioritized for us to address through these network changes. The first was that we need more frequent transit service in the Highlands. Second, that we need to focus on filling service gaps both in the Renton Highlands and in Benson Hill. Third, that we need to provide better access to community assets. There's some areas where there's maybe growing commercial corridors, new community center where we don't operate service today, and we need to change our pathway to better meet those needs. As I said before, east-west connections are difficult. We need to work on improving those. And then finally, buses take too long. Sometimes the routing is really indirect, so we need to provide faster, more direct service for people. I'm going to dive into the detail of a couple of areas where we're focusing on changes. But some of the key changes that we're making are, as I said, investing in more service frequency, more evening service, more direct pathways, creating this new frequent route that will travel from Renton to Kent to Auburn and then become the Rapid Ride Eye Line, creating a new connection to Sounder for people who are living in Fairwood and Benson Hill. And then finally, some proposed flexible services to meet some of those gaps that aren't met by traditional bus service. Okay, so we are looking at changes to Route 906, which connects Fairwood, Benson Hill, the Renton Industrial Valley to the South Center area on Tukwila. And we are looking to straighten out that route and connect it to Tukwila Station. This will provide a new connection to all Sounder trips from these communities. We've heard a lot of support for this change from major employers in Renton, particularly Kaiser Permanente, folks in the IKEA District, Valley Medical Center, because it's going to provide a much better connection for employees. But additionally, we are investing in more morning service, more midday service, and later evening trips so that people who are traveling throughout the day can use this east-west route. We are also making, as I said, the pathway more direct so that people can have a faster trip through this area. In Benson Hill, we heard a lot about 116th as an area with growing housing, a new community center where we don't operate any bus service today. So we are proposing to realign Route 148 from the Lake Youngs area to serve this growing commercial corridor. This was proposed by our Mobility Board and responds to a lot of, as I said, the feedback that we've heard in engagement. Additionally, we are doing ongoing targeted engagement and planning work for a future flexible service in Benson Hill. So this is a community where we've heard a lot of people are using transit, but it's challenging to provide a bus service that would meet everybody's needs. So we're looking at something that might be more on-demand and responsive to the particular barriers in that area. In the Renton Highlands, we have Route 105, which connects Renton Transit Center to Renton Technical College and other major destinations in the Renton Highlands. This is one of our highest-performing routes in South King County and one that we are very excited to continue to invest in. We invested some more service in this route in September 2019. And through this proposal, we'll continue to invest in this route to have 15-minute peak-period service to connect people to Renton Technical College and to other areas of the Renton Highlands. Part of the resources for investing in this route would come from Route 908, which is an existing DART route that follows largely the same pathway as Route 105. And instead of operating that service to meet some of the needs that can't be met with fixed route service, we are doing engagement and planning for a flexible service in the Renton Highlands as well. So we're working with different community organizations and doing engagement at some locations on the Highlands to try to understand where people are trying to travel to. Primarily, we've heard that people want to connect from areas further north in the Highlands and a little bit further east into Central Renton and the Renton Landing. So that's kind of the general service area that we're looking at for that flexible service. But we're still doing engagement because that is separate from the fixed route changes that we're making in September 2020. So that's not part of the council package that we're moving forward with. And then finally, in our proposal, we are proposing to create a single route that does not exist today, that would connect Renton, sorry, Central Renton, Valley Medical Center to the Kent East Hill and Kent and Auburn. We've heard a lot about travel in this corridor, and this is a route that we have been hoping to make for a long time. So we're excited that it will become a reality. And then in 2023, it will be upgraded to the Rapid Ride Eye Line, which you will be hearing about shortly. So I just want to ground this September 2020 investment in kind of the framework of service changes and investments in Renton. As I mentioned, in fall 2019, we've invested service hours in Routes 101, 105, 107, and 906. That's part of our kind of continual process of evaluating our service and making investments to improve how our routes serve our riders. We will be making changes in 2020 and investing additional hours in an updated network through this plan. In 2022, we'll begin a similar planning process to prepare for connecting to the I-405 BRT route. We've heard a lot from your city staff about the need to have high-quality transit service in the Renton Landing in particular. And this is the service restructure where we'll really be thinking about those connections in the I-405 BRT and making sure that we're meeting the changing growth and development in that area. In 2023, we will begin service on the Rapid Ride Eye Line. And then in 2024, those changes associated with I-405 BRT would be implemented. So it's just one snapshot in a series of continual change in Renton. All right, so we, as I said, will be finalizing our service change proposal with our Mobility Board tomorrow evening. We will then be assembling our ordinance package for King County Council. We've been working with City of Renton staff throughout this process, and we'll be requesting a letter of support from them based on feedback on the proposed changes. Our King County Council members will want to know what Renton thinks of the proposal. So we like to make that a part of the decision-making process. And then we will continue after that service change ordinance process is complete to work with city staff on educating riders about the changes that are coming up and dealing with sort of the technical nitty-gritty bus stop changes and signage changes that are required to make the service change a reality. Any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead.
Not a question, just a comment. The east-west service on Petrovsky is huge. I've heard that from plenty of people, that that's a huge, huge need. So appreciate the inclusion of that.
Great. That's good to hear.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the work.
Now we're on to the Eye Line.
Thank you.
Okay, next update is, as you said, is the Rapid Ride Eye Line. And we have two presenters for that. Hannah McIntosh, on the right here, on my right, is the Director of the Program. So she oversees all of the Rapid Ride routes that are being developed throughout the county. And then Greg McKnight, which we interact with a lot. Greg's been an excellent project manager for the Eye Line. He's been interacting with Banji and I on a weekly basis. So he's really been doing a great job and keep us informed of the progress of the project. And the Eye Line is the second of our Rapid Ride lines. We've already got the F-line implemented. And in Metro Connects, we've actually identified two more on top of the Eye Line that will be developed in the future, one being the Rapid Line between Bellevue and Renton, the other one from the Highlands area, which is currently the 105 and the 106 up into the Seattle area. So we have more Rapid Rides to come even after the Eye Line. That I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. This is on, right? Yeah. We are delighted to be here this evening. Thank you for having us. And it's really appropriate that we followed Natalie and her discussion of the Area Mobility Plan because as she laid out in that slide, the Eye Line really is one of the ways that this long-term mobility planning for Renton is going to become a reality. So we are at an important milestone right now. We are identifying our locally preferred alternative, which is a critical step in our Small Starts Federal Transit Administration grant application process. And you're going to hear a little more from Greg about that whole process as we go. And I also wanted to emphasize how appreciative we have been of Jim and Banji's time on this project. They have been amazing partners, always available to pick up the phone or return a call, and that is just invaluable. So we appreciate it. I am not going to do most of the talking tonight. Most of the talking is going to be Greg because he's the one who really knows what he's talking about. But I did want to just remind us, we at King County Metro are very, very proud of the Rapid Ride project or product. I spend a lot of time talking to my national peers. And people all over the country are trying to figure out how to fill that gap between local bus service and rail. And Rapid Ride, we were doing it a decade before almost anybody else was doing it. So it is a high-capital-investment bus product. It carries today about 70,000 people around the county, almost as much as Linklight Rail carries, I have to say. Not that it's a competition. But it is, it is a product that we are very excited about and very excited to bring more of to Renton. You can go ahead and click. Greg, thank you. So the main purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide an update on the Eye Line. It's been, I think the last time we were here was in August. And we want to ask for your help to ensure that we are hearing from the whole Renton community. So Rapid Ride generally, I know we talked about this when we kicked off the project, so we're not going to spend a ton of time on it. But Rapid Ride is different from local bus service. There is, there are special stations. You can see on this slide in front of you a preview of what our concept design for stations is going to look like. Specially branded vehicles. And probably the most important element of Rapid Ride, but the one that is invisible often to our riders, is the speed and reliability investments. So changes to signals, dedicated right-of-way in some cases. And this is often where the bulk of the capital investment and the dollars are spent because it makes our service faster and it makes it reliable. It makes it become a real alternative to driving alone for our passengers. And then obviously, frequent service and special branding. I've already talked about the capital investments a little bit, and I think I'll just let Greg talk specifically about the types of things we are looking at for the Eye Line. So we'll go ahead and skip past that. And then the expansion timeline, I think you all have seen this as well. But the Eye Line really is one of the very first of our next wave of Rapid Ride expansion. So there are six lines in existence today. And with the opening in 2023, the Eye Line will be one of the first of the new lines that are planned. And then key to delivery of these projects is our partnership with you, with the local jurisdiction. And when we say partnership, that means there are many different aspects to that. There is your help in reaching Renton residents who have a say in what this project looks like and how it can best serve them. There's ongoing coordination with city electeds and obviously with city staff, which is happening. There's, to the extent possible, aligning our investments and investments that are already planned. So if there are projects that provide access to transit and connections, you know, to the extent possible, really trying to leverage the investment we're all making for the benefit of people riding, riding Rapid Ride. And then probably the biggest thing that Renton brings to the table is your cooperation around your city streets. So giving transit priority is a, it's a big decision. And it involves how we time, how you time your signals. And, you know, is there going to be a queue jump in a certain location so the bus can get out ahead of a backup at a, at a light? Those conversations that really, at that level of detail, we're just starting to get into and will get into more in the coming year are a really key way that we partner. There are also grant applications. And as I mentioned, looking for opportunities to line up your CIP with the investment we're making. I think our, our gold standard would be if we can leverage the investment we're making to, to bring improvements to Renton that maybe neither one of us would have been able to do alone, but together we can. And Greg is going to talk more specifically about the Eye Line.
Great. So diving into the Eye Line, as Hannah mentioned, we have quite a few new Rapid Ride lines in development right now. And we're going to dive deep into the Eye Line here tonight. So just a little bit more grounding in the overall picture of the Eye Line. We know that Renton has a vision of being the center of opportunity, and we really need people to be able to get around Renton in a fast, reliable way. So the Eye Line is going to be part of that fabric for the City of Renton. And as Natalie set up earlier tonight, we really want to build off of the good work of her project, of that Renton-Kent-Auburn Area Mobility Plan, to get those people connected where they want to go, create that network of options so that people can get where they need to go at the times that they need to. So one of the other things that we are looking at with the Eye Line that Natalie mentioned in her project as well is really looking at serving historically underserved communities. The Rapid Ride Eye Line alignment is, is a very key backbone to South King County that can really help move people throughout the area. And then also, that speed and reliability investment that Hannah mentioned, that really helps make sure that transit is coming when people expect it to and gets you there quickly so you can really depend on it. And then also, that can help decrease some congestion since we might be able to get some of those capital improvements to get the bus around some of that congestion, get a few more people out of their cars and into transit so we can really help push people in that way. And then also, this is complementary to the City of Renton's visions. The City of Renton has a transportation improvement program that the Eye Line will tie into very, very nicely. So we're really trying to work very closely with the City of Renton on this project. So a little bit about the timeline. We're on a little bit longer timeline than Natalie's Mobility Plan project. And that's due to a lot because of that capital investment. So through 2019, we've been in planning. We're moving into our preliminary design phase. And that's where we've heard a lot from the community. We've done a lot of community engagement, hearing about those needs, hearing about some of those barriers, trying to really figure out how to best serve the people along the alignment. And then now we're moving into a lot of that nitty-gritty details on, okay, how can we get the bus around this congestion? And where can we get another, another signal timed in a different way? So that's what we're working on right now. And another key aspect of that is identifying our locally preferred alternative. So as Hannah mentioned, we're, we're at this milestone of trying to establish what kind of the bigger picture of this project looks like. And that's something I'm going to go into in a little more detail in a few more slides. But that's all kind of happening concurrently right now. So we're in a really, really fun place in this project. So after that, we will get into our final design, go into construction, and then look at a start of service in September 2023. So a little bit about the funding picture for the Rapid Ride Eye Line. We have about $120 million of expected capital dollars for that. That is just for those speed and reliability improvements, those stations, those access improvements, all of those details that we want to really bring to this robust service. And as you'll see, about half of that funding, we're expecting from a FTA Small Starts Grant. So this is a competitive grant program at the federal level. And we are looking at putting a application together this upcoming summer. So part of that process is developing our locally preferred alternative, working with the City of Renton very closely on what that looks like so that we can have a very clean, competitive grant application this upcoming summer. So let's talk a little bit about where, where we've been so far. So Natalie mentioned a lot of community engagement that's happened for the Mobility Plan. The Eye Line used a lot of that same engagement. We had needs assessment surveys out. We went out and rode buses. We talked to different stakeholders within the community. We went to community events. We had a great table at Renton River Days where we talked to a lot of people all day. It was a really successful trip out. The weather was just great. So that was, that helped a lot. But we've been really, really focusing on making sure that we're getting out and talking to the people about what their needs and barriers are for this project. And so what have we been using that information for recently? Our last couple of rounds of engagement, we've really been focused on where people need to go. So what have we heard about where people want to access stations? So the community told us, you know, we want to access the bus where, where there's other transit connections, like the South Renton Park and Ride. We want to be able to connect to other services like the F-line or other services that connect at the Renton Transit Center or the South Renton Park and Ride. So we heard that a lot through our community engagement and then also at community facilities. So Valley Medical Center is something that we've heard a lot of people say is a very key destination that we wanted to make sure we were serving. And then also, we had our own technical analysis in where we would place stations. So where is there high ridership today? Where, where are those walksheds? Where, where should we be placing stations so that we have a good amount of stations to where people can access them without having to walk too far? But also that they're not too close together so we can try to maintain some of that speed and reliability that we're looking for. So in our engagement phase, we went out and asked people where they would prioritize stops to be. And you may or may not be able to see it very clearly in the slide, but we have a little heat map of where we found people either putting stickers on a board at a public space or on an online survey or, or in an onboard paper survey. And we kind of amalgamated that into where people think they need to access the bus. And then we then used that to determine where we would then put stations. So this is kind of the process we've been through in the last six, eight months. And so right now, we're looking at where these stations should be. And we're really vetting to make sure that those are really, really meeting the needs. We're not quite done with this process. We still might move those stations around a little bit depending on design constraints. Oh, maybe we need to move this another 50 feet because there's a, there's a retaining wall that we can't move or something like that. But we really wanted to make sure we were responding to the community's needs in where we were placing these stations. And so that next step is really vetting that, which we're outdoing right now. And then also establishing what some of those next barriers might be. If we are putting a station at a certain place, can people get there? Can they, is there a safe pedestrian crossing? Are there good sidewalks? Is there, is there lighting for those stations? So that's kind of where, where we're at now, is looking at, can we make sure that where we're putting these stations makes sense for people to actually get there? So one, one nice, nice little photo that we have able to put together. This shows that kit of parts that Hannah mentioned earlier, we're really looking at really having a presence in our stations. So this image is a rendering of what a station at outside of the Valley Medical Center could look like. It shows our new kit of parts, which is our new station design with our real-time information. And it also shows some of the other amenities that we could potentially put in there, better pedestrian crossings, really trying to create that sense of, of place so that people can really know that the bus is going to be here. They feel safe waiting. They want to use the service. And that can really help increase our ridership and improve that access for everyone. So it's really kind of double-edged in that is that we really want to invest in creating that sense of place. And then that then helps people feel like they have better opportunity to use the service.
And the fall leaves are always going to be a perfect Rapid Ride red. I don't know if you noticed that.
So I want to dive a little bit into that locally preferred alternative. So as we've mentioned a few times this evening, we're developing this locally preferred alternative to go through our King County Council process so that we can tell the federal government that, yes, we want to build this, and this is what we want to build, and please give us money for it. So I'm going to walk through a few of the, the key points of that process that we're trying to adopt in the next six months or so. And so the first aspect of that locally preferred alternative, and where we've really been working very closely with the city on, on the elements of this, is that purpose and need. So this is something that we, we're really proud of, what we're trying to do, and we want to make sure that the federal government knows that as well. So we're hoping that we can provide that fast, frequent, convenient service to attract more people to our service than some, than other services may be able to do. And that need is really coming back to a lot of the things that we've heard throughout the last year, and Natalie touched on, of trying to get people where they need to go and have that be reliable, serve the communities that have been historically underserved. A lot of this comes together, and so we're able to put that together and, and move that forward as kind of the platform for building this project. The document will have some, some basic facts about what we're trying to do. It's a 17-mile north-south bus rapid transit service connecting a lot of key regional growth centers, connects a lot of other transit services. So people, people make a lot of connections through South King County. It's a very large area. There's a lot of people trying to go a lot of different places. The Rapid Ride I-line can serve as a spine to help people get to some of those connections. We have connection points to the Sound Transit Sounder Service at both Auburn and Kent. We'll be connecting to the existing F-line here in Renton, the future I-405 BRT from Sound Transit. And then, as Jim mentioned, there are many more Rapid Ride lines that King County Metro is hoping to invest in, in the coming years, and a lot of them will connect into this spine of the Rapid Ride I-line. One important aspect of that locally preferred alternative is the mode. It's easy for us to go, well, of course, we're talking about buses. We're, we're metro, that's what we do. But the, the federal government might want to know that we are actually talking about buses here. And one note on this is we are looking at a diesel-electric hybrid fleet. The King County does have a vision of going all-electric, and we are committed to that vision. The timeline of that isn't necessarily aligned with the 2023 opening of the Rapid Ride I-line. So we will likely start on day one with diesel hybrid buses, but then likely be turning those over into that all-battery fleet as that comes online. One of the other aspects of that locally preferred alternative talks about passenger facilities and amenities. So this is where we really get to shine and say, hey, we have unique branding, we have special buses that are a different color, that have different features, our stations have more amenities, and so we really get to talk about what those features might be. We don't necessarily go into the details of what those features might be at every single station. We're not quite that far along in our design process to be able to identify that, but our locally preferred alternative will, will really just kind of talk about that suite of options that we have. And then finally, the locally preferred alternative will talk about the route. So in this case, we will be serving the Auburn Station to the Kent Station, up to the Kent East Hill, Long Benson, to the Valley Medical Center, and then up into the South Renton Park and Ride, becoming the South Renton Transit Center in a few more years, and then to the Renton Transit Center. And this has been a route that we've been doing a lot of engagement and outreach on over the last year. We've worked very closely with the City of Renton technical staff, all of you here, as well as through our, our community engagement efforts to make sure that that alignment is really meeting the needs of, of all the users. And so we really wanted to make sure that it was really fitting into that bigger network, and knowing what other investments might be coming online in later years, and making sure that we're really honing in on where this alignment should be, to make sure that we're really tying into all of that fabric of other transportation choices, like Natalie mentioned earlier. So what's happening right now? We are out in the community. We're talking about a lot of the elements of that locally preferred alternative with, with the community, with Vanjie and Jim, can't, can't get enough of me talking about these things lately. We are really making sure that all of the features that we're putting into that high-level view of what this project will be are reflective of, of the needs throughout this area. So right now, we do have an engagement phase happening. We have an online open house happening right now. It's live through November 29th, so everyone listening out there, go online right now, rapidridei-line.com. We have a survey you can take. We also are out at community events, we're presenting at different organizations, we're garnering feedback any, any way we can, so please, everyone, spread the word. We, we'd love to hear more about, you know, what, what's working, what you think some other barriers might be that we might be able to address with this project. And so finally, a few last next steps. So we're really honing in on that locally preferred alternative, making sure that we have that in a, a place that we feel comfortable and everyone's confident in what, what is, what we're trying to do here, and we're going to move that through our King County Council process, starting at the beginning of the next year. So that will be a document that's used to adopt an ordinance through that process, and we will be working with the city to make sure that our council process, much like Natalie talked about with the mobility plan, our council will want to make sure that all of our partners actually are on board with our project. So we will be working very closely with, with Jim and Vanjie and the rest of you on having a letter of support for that process. So there'll be more to come on that for, for Vanjie and Jim and, and some of the other people at the city, but that's something we're working on right now, is, is making sure that everybody's comfortable with, with what we're moving forward with, and then being able to present that to our council so that we can get that adopted, and then show that to the federal government and say, hey, this is what we want to build, here's some great features about it, we'd love to work with you more on, on, on how we can get that grant successfully. And then, of course, we will have ongoing community engagement. We have a phase that's wrapping up in the next three weeks or so, but that does not mean that we will be, be finished. This is a, you know, another four years before we're out live on the streets, so we will be continuing to work with the community, working with the technical staff here at Renton, and of course, all of you. So we have, we're still, still have quite a few steps to go, but we're very excited at the progress we've made so far. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Any questions? Brian?
So funding, obviously, seems to be a pretty big component of this, so I think the two questions I want to ask for that, one, the federal grant, what is the backup plan if that money doesn't come through, and what does that do to the timeline for delivery? And then the other question I asked the elephant in the room is, how does 976 factor into this? I know you knew that one was coming.
I'll go ahead and grab both of these, if that's okay, Greg. So we can start with 976. So that is a live issue for us right now also. I think anybody that has regional mobility grants, connecting Washington grants right now, we're all trying to figure out exactly what that means. So we haven't gotten our formal guidance from the state. I think everybody's kind of waiting for the dust to settle. The fact of these Rapid Ride projects is that they are scalable to a certain extent. And so, to a lesser extent, with the regional mobility grant, because it is a fairly small percentage of our overall target budget, but certainly with the FTA Small Starts Grant, if we, so what we want is a project that we can submit next August, is it next August? Yes. That's going to rate high in the federal process. And if we can do that, if we can build a project together that provides enough travel time savings for our customers and a high enough projected ridership that we can score a high rating, then you're, you're kind of in the pipeline, and then it's a matter of timing, and it's just a matter of how, how long it takes to actually shake that money free. If for some reason, you know, things can always change, and it's not, it's not in our hand yet, and so if for some reason we got to a point where it looked like the federal money was unlikely, and if policies change, the program can change, and if that happens, we would want to sit down, and we have a standard for Rapid Ride. We have our Rapid Ride standard that says if it falls short of this in its performance characteristics, it's not Rapid Ride, it's not BRT. We would want to take a look at where we were at and see if there was a way to build a project that still delivered that speed and reliability benefit, but, you know, maybe it doesn't have as much access to transit investment, or there are some nice-to-haves here that we think will deliver a more complete project for these communities. But at the end of the day, are they like central to delivering speed and reliability? Maybe not. So I think if we got to the point where funding sources were looking less certain, we would have that conversation probably with you all also about, is it a timing issue? Do we just need to wait? Or is it a scope issue? And, you know, our goal is not to get there. Our goal is to design an amazing project that gets a high score, a high rating when we apply for our rating, and we get in the pipeline. But it's totally a fair question, especially with, you know, the regional mobility grant program right now.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
If I may.
Go ahead, Randy.
So, hi, I'm, I'm really excited about it. First of all, I should say thank you for all the work you've done on this, and it's really coming along, and I really like the proposal out and the branding and everything. And, and I know, at least, I think I heard you say it in the presentation, sort of acknowledgement of the 405 BRT, but, but I would just hope that we could really tool this presentation to make it clear that I, I think this could be a major collector to bring people to the 405 BRT. It's, it's almost a really logical extension, I think, of that service because of the, I mean, we, we show it as going to the Park and Ride, but of course, it would go to the, the Transit Center that's attached, which is serving the BRT directly and get people all the way up north. So I hope that could be part of the seeking those federal grants.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a great point. And, and just for extra information on that, we are working very closely with Sound Transit and the City of Renton on that, that design of that new transit center at the South Renton Park and Ride, whatever we're going to call it when it's all done.
Great.
So we're going to make sure that our I-line service can, can really tie into that 405 surface very, very easily, so people can make that transfer.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. You've been very informative, and we've had nothing but a lot of good comments on the F-line, so this would only be making it better, so really appreciate the job that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And we are adjourned.